Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay. I call the meeting to order on August 2nd at 6:00 PM at the plant hall. We have an addition to the agenda, and that is the authority to act for the town's Highway Department and Town Administrator. So we need a motion to make changes to the proposed agenda. Anyone want to make that motion? Any further discussion?
Where did you say, Joe, that was going to go?
It's not going to go, it's been added.
I know. Where is it?
Well, it will be on the highway.
This is actually under highway.
And also, since the sheriffs are here, we might want to move them up to after the minutes so they can go on and do their thing. Everybody's okay with that?
And, Joe, I was just wondering about other business. It seems like we've kind of dropped the other business items from our agendas. Could we put that back on now?
If you're so, so does that, yeah.
Yeah, let's keep it on there.
No, it's not. I don't believe it, but it's.
Okay.
You want to add other business, we can.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great.
So somebody make a motion to adopt the amended agenda, say, uh?
On time.
Opposed? Okay. So we have the minutes of the meeting on Monday, the 26th. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes of July 26th because of special meeting. Six. Need further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Okay. Sheriff, you guys are on. You might want to move closer, I don't know if that helps them.
Sure. So I'm Captain Paul King, sheriff of the county sheriffs. Sheriff Anderson can make it tonight, so you can hear and hopefully answer your questions. And if I don't know, we'll call Mark. I know you have some questions with regards to animal control. Is that correct?
Well, I think there's a couple of questions that concern them.
Okay.
And we have, obviously, the contract hasn't been approved. We're waiting for your comment, Sean, and Sean goes about it.
So I'll talk in regards to animal control. I know that it's one of the items that came up. So we started originally animal control as of July 1st. The towns that are on it right now, I always get this wrong because it's only towns that want to come in. So Wyndham, Putney, Westminster, a new thing. And we've had conversations with towns in Jamaica, so for someone that also want to get involved in the animal control. At this point, we have animal patrol officers at 43 in Animal Science. She's a veterinary tech down at VCA in Bradleboro. She currently works as the animal patrol officer over in Hinsdale. So she has a lot of experience. Currently, we're at about two days a week with her, sharing between all those towns. So when something comes in, if it's a park and dog, or something not as threatening or hype on the list, of course, she addresses that on her days that she works. All right? So if you do have any animal problem, she's available on call, and she can address your issue through by phone, or she has a car dedicated to her. So that's basically, still it's infant stage right now. Like you say, we're only doing about 10 hours a week, maybe 12 hours a week. It's something that maybe you want to get in discussion with. I know Mark has a meeting every morning through by Zoom, or he does it where he gets everybody together and they discuss. His opinion that since Graffin is such a small town, maybe about a 10% feels of the budget that you'd have to kick in to, it's not a duty service, it's actually a budget that you'd have to give and put into really the pool so actually you cannot service your town. So any other questions, any remarks about the contracts and so forth that he's developing? So we can answer that more for you. I think you also have some questions in regards to ticket revenue, or?
Really?
Well, I have one concern, and that is the stop sign that comes in from Townsend and right here with the tab. Two weeks ago, I looked down and served the practice of library, look at East, covered Chester, you know. I came up through, and from the time that I went by your patrol car till I got to here, three cars went through that stop sign. So I stopped, and I sat there. And the next 10 cars, eight of them never stopped.
So where was he parked? Was he parked down there?
Parked down there.
Did he have to come out like this?
He was facing that way.
Okay.
So he couldn't see him. But I don't know, maybe we don't need a stop sign there, that, because you, just to note, I set out there at 5:30. In the first 15 minutes, 10 cars gone, seven or eight never stopped. You went by with your rig and went out that way and then come back. Luckily, you stopped when I was watching.
I see that how times.
Yeah, you try. I just don't understand why there's no violations been written for that stop sign. I mean, you can park up this way and see them, and just because you have a marked car, I don't think that'll make much difference, but it's a.
And maybe Sergeant Lake can answer that? He's here pretty much 90% of the time, so.
Well, with a lot of the hours that you have, looking at hours, primarily, I personally take a lot of complaints in regards to the speed violations on Chester Road, obviously in front of the museum where the kids having their summer camp, and just, well, probably on the towns in a row. I mean, some focus could be made on the stop sign if that came directly, I believe at one time it had been, then COVID kind of took off and kind of probably unlocked and shut up then, but that's the town which, by all means, you know, go break the bill, bill's got my number, I can definitely make sure, that and similar to that, or anybody coming out here on patrol, if that's where the focus wants to be on that stop sign.
I guess that's my focus, and I would think it'd be others' focus, that I just think it's a major place where there is violations, instead of being down by the library all the time, let's take.
Two times that I focus on, I usually go up there in this area, looking down, and make no excuse, although it takes the way to actually violate. I actually maybe witnessed one or two at a time, but primarily I'm focused with the handheld radar, you know, the known speed spots.
Right. Well, I'd like to see less patrol of Middletown, Hinkley Brook, Middletown Cemetery, like that, and more focused on that stop sign.
We certainly can adjust that. I mean, just looking at the stats from over the past year, it looks like 90% of the tickets happen to the fee. So if you want us to concentrate on this, we're absolutely happy to do that.
Majority complaints that we receive are in regards to speed, so I would say, not as an excuse, but that's why you're seeing public issues.
Well, I know three, four, five years ago, you did concentrate on that, and you cut it right out.
What you're doing now, as I said, with the order to build and shuffle through, and you'll see in the Starz reports results of that.
Do we, do we need to have somebody come in and paint a line where it says?
No, I think that you're, now, I would have to review the ordinance, but one thing I'd recommend that Graffin does is adopt the stop signs so we can write out the local ordinance for the town.
Translation.
Instead of the violations going to the state of Vermont, they would come back to the town, similar to your speed violations. Now, I oppose that as a pitch to get the town rich on violations, but you are contracting us to be here, so the money that we write should go back ultimately to the town of Graffin.
So what do we have to do with, I just assumed.
It's the words. You have to review Title 23, Title 8. And it's pretty much just like when you adopt your local highways under Title 7, there has to be notice given to the public, you've actually come up with the actual science that you want to have adopted, give notice to the public, following the protocol of the board that needs to do so. You know, obviously, you could talk to cities, leagues and towns for legal advice on it, but it's not hard. I know Westminster's done it, Putney has done it. I believe even Wyndham is adopting some of those stop signs. It's more of a time issue than anything. It doesn't require the town to be the ones that have to replace the sign, or, you know, necessarily, or no financial burden, I guess, associated with it.
Wait, Bill?
What was the title?
Title 8. Title 23, Title 8, I mean, three, that's.
We only have two stop signs, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The whole town.
Be a short topic.
Yeah, there's a stop sign on 35, coming down to 121, either going over the Cambridge Port Bridge, or into the village. They whip around that stop sign, and if I'm coming off of, um, Parker Hill, there's a stop sign too there, um, they take the whole bridge when they come through, so, and there's been accidents there.
Sure. Sure, we got these stop signs.
Yes. And there's a yield sign too, and a lot of people don't know where they're yielding. You're supposed to yield to the people coming onto the bridge to go left or right.
So similar to the speed violations, which, a stop sign under state is what we do at Y Y, which is pretty much a $162 violation, there is a $47 surcharge mixed into that. So in theory, if you subtract the 47 from the 162, approximately 80% of that should go back to the town, similar to speed violations, depending on what the waiver amount is, depends on how fast they are going, under Title 8.
Well, I know that we, it cost us about $4,500 a year, and we got back $1,900 last year. Nothing.
Well, all I can say is, we have to write "under state" if there is no local ordinance adopted for that stop sign, because if we go to traffic court and the judge challenges that they're going to look at it, that's if we lost automatically. I would much write it under the local ordinance, while I'm saying that it's not possible for Graffin to get the local ordinance, it's just a process to go through, it can be done. But I think the majority of the violations that you're seeing in terms of those checks and their judicial, there are speed violations.
It takes about 30 days. There's studies out there, and this has been developed over 30 years, it takes about 30 days to get a handle on something like this. 30 days to get back out of control again, and so.
Or longer with the way the state's running right now.
Again, so if we're out here for about a month, we're going to see people knowing that we're out here and they'll be stopped. So it's going to take a little bit to get in control. Before I get around, get a ticket, get to around, visibility, so by getting these stop areas here, you should have an under control in weeks. Okay.
Well, I like the fact that you're here. Your visibility means a lot to me, and I think to the folks in Graffin. Are there any areas here in Graffin, or any crimes that are flowing up this way that anyone can be aware of?
Well, again, catalytic converter jobs, those are everywhere, and those are crimes of opportunity, right? I mean, if you're driving by and you see a car, and it's not rolling away, or it could be in the middle of the day, right? And it takes 30 to 45 seconds to pop off one of those converters with a recirculating saw. It's pretty much everywhere. There's been drafts made. I can tell you right now, the FBI is involved in not interstate, Vermont, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, because the material that's in the catalytic converters is going to ship overseas. So now it's a federal effort now to find out, you know, these rings that are going there right now, because when they're taking them off, they're selling them to somebody, right? And we're not knowing who we're selling them to, because we're, we're keeping it quiet. Usually it's outstate, so it's close to the area, we're seeing it more, like in Bellas Falls, we're seeing it in Westminster, we're seeing it in Bradleboro like crazy, right? Like it's crime opportunity. Someone's driving by, they see a vehicle, and it's got a big catalytic burner on it, you know, it's, it has to take very long. Usually they work in twos. Someone will drop them off, it's late at night, especially the ones up in Westminster. Truck, I mentioned Patriot, I think they sell freight railings, so, yeah, they took four off, it mattered minutes, they're, each of them was $4,000, well, actually, $6,000 a piece. So, and then you ended up IDing a person doing that, because this person that did it needed a fix right away, so he went locally and tried selling them. And the person that he was selling them to actually took a picture of him and the catalytic converters and the car, so he didn't risk them. But the other people that are doing this, you know, it's a group effort with them, they might be, they're shipping them down to Massachusetts, New Hampshire, wherever they can go, and they'll get, you know, put money for them.
Yeah, my brother's company got hit.
Yeah.
Twice.
Yeah. So it's very, very, I mean, it's very hard, not unless you're staking out a place, they know what you're looking at, but like, I mean, if so many vehicles around, then they can do it anywhere, right? They can just drive along and grab one, go next time, grab another, and they've been doing that too, so just be vigilant. I mean, try to keep a light on in the driveway, light on in your house, keep your cars locked, but. I know, they take them underneath, but sometimes they'll go inside if they see something too, but it's a crime of, like I say, opportunity, pocketbook, anything like that, they'll take that too. So, and we've had situations where they took the cat, and they also took something else on the front seat, so, you know, it's, it's what it is now, you know, it's tough. So if they're going out at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and driving around, they know police presence is not there, and like you say, it takes them a minute to seek it off and leave the scene.
Is that quick?
Exactly, yeah. We get those Makita saws, and you probably.
If they do it that fast, we need some.
They get underneath, and they zip those things right off.
That's all, yeah. They're inside.
Yeah. If you have a garage, like I said, keep your car inside. They haven't been up this area, I mean, I don't think you've had.
Three, yeah.
Yeah, totally, right? I mean, not as prevalent as some of the other areas that's got it that way, so they're driving around, and some of the stops that we're making up here, even though we're not ready to pick it, might be investigative stops, right? So if you're, you know, if you see somebody, maybe a woman, it might be a vehicle that we're looking for, or a suspect that, you know, looked like a person in the car, whatever, so.
When I came down the road for this meeting, there's a pickup truck rusted out, sitting up on, which was opposite the training cavity.
On 121?
Off of my road. And it's kind of on the, on the grass that's grown up. I don't know how long it's been there, but I saw it when I came down.
It kind of rose it?
White.
White pick-up.
And it's got, it doesn't have the rock flakes.
Somebody in it?
No.
Oh, just that big?
I'm assuming it's an angle look.
And now if you see something reported, or almost see suspicion to it go in the area, and it gets called, or state police, and get a plate if you can, very important. Okay, so then?
I, Captain, I think we contract, the town and Graffin contracts for eight hours per month. You have the stats there, you could correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe so, yes.
And I did the last, in the last form, we signed with the three-hour month. I'm just wondering how we can keep that a track, or work with you to make sure we're getting a full value of our contract?
I mean, absolutely, I mean, we'll give the sheriff a call and speak to him in regards to any concerns or problems that come up, we're happy to address them, especially if that stuff coming up this way in the morning, you know, and specifically areas being controlled, we can break up the outdoors and so forth, and it's a people. But we also have Governor's Highway Safety, which you probably have a marker or explain that to, which is a federal, it's actually a state grant, federal, and we have someone who actually is a coordinator for Southern Vermont that works for us, Sergeant Chris Norton, who does government health safety, doesn't provide your budget, but we can send him up through the problem areas, and he gets paid under that grant, so what costs him, the cost to you. So if you're happy to send him up here, do some spots, like on those stop signs or wherever else you need looked at, we'd be happy to come up here, he won't come off here in weeks.
Well, yeah, the contract is eight hours, you know, per month, and it says the office agrees, on input of the select board, the number of hours per month will be adjusted to the specially identified needs in the town. So when we say, if we need to have more, we could ask you to go nine hours, because there was another issue. So we have that flexibility in the contract. Probably it's going to cost us money, but that's what we have there.
Right, of course. And like I said, Governor's Highway Safety, kind of, if Chris comes up here, we'll just do that for one touch of budget off. We can sit up here in the morning, two days a week to do some.
Speaking of that, could be communication, I was running radar on my pantry here over by the bridge, and Chris down on Chubb Road here came up to me and told me about a loud truck they had going through, but it was 5:30 in the morning, been going up every day, waking up his household in the morning. I immediately came out here at 5:30 the next day, and I believe I needed that subject, I mean, we didn't change names on who it was, but just kind of simply coming up to one of us and saying, this is the issue, and it really affects my captain or whoever is doing the patrol, so just to reinforce communications, if you have residents coming to you with issues on certain times, certain days, we will adjust to that.
The, that's a great point, Robert. We have, in our citizens, they're not clear on what the sheriff's response time or expectation is when they call the sheriff's office. Can you clarify that for us?
We're not the 911 responder. We have regular schedules already put in place with our patrol deputies, so they're kind of hedged in, but like what the captain referred to, would say, like myself, as a person that's dedicated grants, we have that flexibility to move around. I'm not saying that even our primary patrol was actually scheduled in Athens that morning, couldn't switch them out and go up here to Graffin, then go to Athens. So there is some flexibility, I mean, but we need to know about the problem and then see if we can adjust to it.
Maybe just call the sheriff's office, make that request, right?
Yep. Go for dispatch, and well, I would request a phone call back, just so there's some communication of exactly, so it doesn't get lost in the communication chain dispatch. And if you have a certain resident who's a complainer, we can obviously follow that particular resident to adjust what they're saying, so now they know that you are back coming through and are listening to their needs.
Thank you.
If you serve, we can shoot us an email. I mean, I make Dr. Bill all the time an email, so we have to, make sure we get it. Are you still short-staffed, short-staffed and underfunded with this new COVID, and you guys, are we, should we have any of this new money to help the department?
We have money coming in with COVID that's stopped, and that was just to cover basically everything south of last year. We use that fund to, you know, keep it under standard, since we're in that contract. This year, we are full staffed, actually, quite a number of applicants that come to us. So I think we're maybe short one, and that'll probably fill next month. And so otherwise, Bradleboro, Bradleboro called us, Bellas Falls called us, Springfield called us, to help fill in with their short staff up there. And of course, we, we're going to pull away from our towns, if we have plenty of staff, maybe, but, you know, we're full staff now, and the full timers, I should say, and a few part timers, so really could pull someone like me, saying that they're, who's taking it from our towns. We're going to have the funds to help this out.
All right. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the animal control part, as to what you would recover if you were to contract?
Well, if there was, if someone called on a Sunday night and said, the department dog, we're not gonna, we're gonna take, take that information, take that information, who it is, and Ashley would follow up on that.
So like dog, or somebody, they found, they started yawn, they got it in their home, you would come in?
Yeah, we could take the dog and bring it down to Wyndham, Wyndham County, we got the combination, I think, to kind of make sure he, she has it to do.
And so you've got, so you communicate with the health officer if there's a dog, right?
Of course.
Non-licensing dogs, or do you?
We can do that.
You do a dog census, what's that left up to the town?
That's left up to the town. I know Ashley's working with, I think, I'm trying to figure out the figures, right? I think Putney had 28 dogs that weren't licensed, and Westminster had 128 dogs. So she's working on that right now. She's developing a form, actually, she has a form from New Hampshire, she's already involved, so if you can apply it here, and she's working with the towns to give the dogs license for the revenue in books.
And so if they, if they have that license, do you ticket them like we were considering with our ticketing process, to ticket them?
Yeah, sure, you do that. So you're right, so you get together with her and develop the form, and where you got, so if, you know, if you have it in books now, it's a $5 fee, or a $25 fee, or a late fee, incorporate all that under there. That's, that's all the process that we've developed right now, the town's, it's hopefully happening, it's on.
And do you have any idea what if it's supposed to contract?
You know, 10%, Mark mentioned it.
Can I start with our contract?
I'm sorry?
10% of our contract?
10% of the A C O contract, the whole contract, figures you just be up to 10% just due to the population. So I just have the figure on that, but that's something.
I think Mark said around 2,000.
Okay. For you.
For you.
And that would give you, you know, Ashley, whatever quality you have, she's a response, she's very, very knowledgeable, we're looking to get her, so.
So we have your contract here, so that would be an additional contract?
Yes.
It's not something we enter here, it's a contract with, with her, or with?
With, yeah, with the sheriff's office, but specifically the A C O guy, we divide her, right, so we divide her funds, just separate, separate accounts, is what we say, so come out there. And she does Starz reports also, so the Starz reports, town activity reports that we can review, she has it on, so she can see what she's exactly doing, or what she directs that over.
And the more times that join, the less it is to more.
Right, yeah. It's kind of, right? More people that get in on it, and there's a lot of towns, I mean, I know state police just calls us, they should call us, no matter what town it is, they'll call, it's like, then you're out of control out there, and they're like, yeah, we might have a bad time with that town, and, well, I thought it was just regional, you know, and it's, well, eventually it's going to get to that, right?
And so we would still have the contract relating to animal shelter that we do now, so it's not incorporated in it? So we'd watch the Wyndham Community Society, it's like three, two years, still would continue that? And then you would just take them to whoever?
Right. And that's what we'd like to think of it, she has the information, she's there.
And there's no start or finish for the contract, it's whether you decide to sign up when it's on your basis?
Correct.
So there's no, you got to tell it to one person?
No. I mean, that's what I'm saying, we've got a lot more, I think four towns that want to get in on it, or at least get more information on it, they just been saying that it's only a place they're coming in, they're kind of strapped to.
Are you just by word of mouth? I mean, I hadn't ever heard of this happening until I talked to.
So July 1st, we started it. Yeah, it's in the infant stage, you could say right now, it's still developing our policies, procedures, so forth, so it's, it's right there, but she's, you know, she comes in Tuesday, and she's jumping from town to town to town, and it's in here, all the issues.
Anything else? What we need, I think we need to have some kind of a motion for adopt the contract, it was due July 1, obviously.
That, and who's going to sign it?
Yeah, I think they're going to sign it. So somebody want to make a motion to accept the contract as presented by the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office? So, who did the, who had the?
I don't know.
Put it up, I don't get.
One of us will second it.
And the motion is to include the town and Graffin, so that Bill would sign for the town. Any further discussion on that?
So that the town includes the program with the dog?
No, that would be something separate from any deal. So if there's any discussion on the contract, if not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so I'll, I'll give this to Bill later, and then Bill, or you do it now, and then Bill sign it. Now, do you want, do you want anything on the dogs, or do you want to leave the budgetary in?
I would want to weigh in a little bit and talk a little bit more on it, maybe wait till we budget for it.
Is there, is there any information that we need to get from you on the program, other than what we described today? Is there, is there any information that we need to get from you on the program other than what we described today?
Yeah, and I think that's gonna be a phone call with Mark, who will definitely talk to you about everything about it, I mean, and basically just know the service, what's going on and and he's got all the skeletal fine print, I think he would like to discuss with you. And be happy to set up a, you know, moving interview.
Well, essentially, we're involved with this disastrous flood here. So I'll, I'll get it all, Bill, or maybe a ten minute, that's something. Get some more information on it, and certainly what the claws, however they want to handle it. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So highway report, so the first item on that is the authority to act for the town, highway foreman and the town administration. Do you want to talk about that, Danny?
Is that on there?
Well, it's on there because we thought maybe you wanted to have it on there.
Authority to act for town highway.
Yeah, on highway. And, and?
It's more or less just the permission, which we did the other night for.
And eliminated the two decisions and purchase materials, but to make decisions and purchase materials based solely on and or use in the response to the damages and recovery efforts due to the July 30 through August 2nd, 2021 stormy flooding. So just for that purpose.
It's a damage covered.
Yeah, we, we talked about it, but it was never signed.
Oh, okay.
So if you still want to do this, then we have it here.
Oh, yeah, it's kind of nice that it was authority.
John, you have anything you want to say about that?
Well, I don't know if it falls under this or not, but you, the site should give Bill and myself and Michelle authority for what we've been doing for the last three days. Permission.
What is that?
Well, what we've been doing is going over all the roads that were hit by the rain and wind and assessing the damage and reporting back and taking pictures and so forth. And then get this set up so that when this is declared a disaster, we can meet with FEMA and lower the damage.
I move that we grant the authority just described by John with gratitude.
Somebody want a second?
Okay.
Bill, do we need to do a special declaration that we need to sign or?
I don't think the governor has declared yet.
Well, I mean, do we need to do any other than make a motion and agree to it? There's nothing we have to sign that we can do here?
No. It might be even covered under, under Danny's authority, but John wanted to make sure that people understood which he's doing the work in that. And John and Michelle especially did all the paperwork during Irene and they know how to handle it and they're great help to Jim, so that she can keep track of those expenses and they're great help to, to Danny to make sure that the life maintenance work is done.
For, for members of the board who were not here during any of the floods, there's a tremendous amount of paperwork and there's a amount of work that has to get done. And so it has to be presented in a special way to FEMA, to the state, so it's not something you just do, it's something that requires a lot of time and effort. And Michelle was very good doing that during Irene, I believe. And we have all the procedures, so I think we should do.
You have to present your case to B Trans and to FEMA in order to get a lot of this money back or for them to say, yeah, you got damage. We may think there is, but they may not, and so you're gonna be present and you know, stand up and say that, you know, we think there is, so.
So, yeah, what they've been doing, we've been doing is all the standard stuff for to get any universal, you know, pictures, estimating for, you know, quantities material. There's a lot of our stuff, our big ones, we've already put out, so they're gonna go by pictures and documentation of what we've done. If you don't, if you don't have that, you don't get help in the first.
Which we have done.
Which is done. The state is supposed to be here tomorrow to meet with us and hopefully give us more information. I know it's been submitted to, to go forward to FEMA, but it hasn't happened yet because it's a million dollar threshold, I'm hoping alone will hit that, so.
No, we're pretty close to it ourselves, I mean.
If they accept everything?
Yeah.
There's a few things that we've got clarified on, class four roads and stuff. There's a lot of changes to the standards and stuff after Irene, because there was a lot of things that was, you had to fight for to get. So those new contracts that we, you guys sign every year, so we wrote the standards in that 64. In mind of mine, it's, it's all listed right in there, because what we have to do to get the grant money and stuff and I think the state's on the hook to do what we've been doing, and that's including class four. There's a lot of damage on the class four, so Ledro, Anderson Road, and Doug Road, you haven't looked at it wholly yet. There's a lot of money to go there, possibly a box over on Ledro.
So we, we need a motion for this, soon. Okay, so, I think the data motion is out there. So if there's no further discussion, if you're in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Now, the other one we have on the topic is this declaration of the authority. I think we already approved this, I do believe, at the emergency meeting. I'm sorry? We, the declaration, I think we approved this at the emergency meeting. The declaration of authority?
Yeah, you just said it at the emergency meeting.
Okay, but that's the same, same thing as this.
Yeah, it never signed.
Okay, now we gotta sign it. So I'll start on there and sign it and then we can give it to them. Do we have any other, any other discussion on the topic of authority or whatever? If not, you want to address Route 21 in Basins, Danny?
So we did some of this the other night, it was about Taylor's Committee Strucker, and that was discussed the other night for 121 or even the flood, so. And for Basins, I have not heard from them on the scheduling. It was kind of left up there a week before this flood happened. I do know that they're stating that a lot of people are trying to hire anywhere to do flood work, because they have so much work. So I, I think there's, you know, they're still planning on doing these projects.
Okay, you do.
As long as, the stockpile has started crushing, so I think the material will be there. Some of the trucks that are on right now, we're gonna have to do the whole slips in the end because we're trucking out of the stockpile I had for the project. So that'll be kind of like figuring out how much to use for the flood and what's left in the end, but I'm still, I'm still planning on trying to do it. A lot of the repairs on the road, as long as we can have contractors here to do them for the flood stuff, it, it makes it a lot cleaner for the, you know, FEMA and all that, you know, the town is still gonna be doing some of it. But we still got a lot of work to do on that project with the coverts and different things, so. I'm gonna try to focus on doing that 1.1 stuff.
So we can always, we can always put that on, I mean, if things change, that I'm assuming in middle August, we can always.
Yeah, we have to, you know, we have to talk to Basins too, because we already awarded them, so our intent is to do it.
And we do have the money from the state.
Right, right.
Does Danny have a question?
Yes, but John, I think you had a question, you go first. Did you have a question? I'll go ahead. Danny, did I just hear you say that there would be contractors doing the flood work?
Yes, which we have now.
And so how do we pay for it?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So it's a reimbursement.
I do not understand the mechanics of that and what you mean.
They feel it's just as if it was just regular work done for us, we're paying and then we go out to FEMA and state for reimbursement.
Okay.
We're having matching, you know, the 12% that we have to come up with, which more than likely will be in kind services and stuff that we're doing already. You know, they get graders, we don't have many graders out there, so it'd be certain parts of town we'd be doing when we're not working on the other projects.
So do we have the money to do that, to pay these bills as they come in from our local contractors?
Treasure.
Thank you, Ken. Because, you know, we got a million dollars.
Danny, when can we first see the first, uh, time sheets from the contractors?
I, I think we're gonna just run them as a county payday, so it would be next, is it next week?
This weekend.
This weekend. So.
Yeah, because that's the longest one.
A lot of the contractors, I guess, should be submitting them for Friday.
On Friday, yeah, Friday.
Well, I just ask because we would want to stack, separating everything from that onto a spreadsheet, so that we know.
I'm trying this time to have contractors, the name Bill, do most of our paperwork because it was such confusing. I've talked to them some. I might be going to a couple of their offices just on how I want, because I want. We have a form with me that lists, you know, the trucks, all the equipment. And then it says location, so they have to fill that out. And I want each of their invoices to be filled per road, per, you know, they can put, if they have three pieces of equipment on Hinkley Brook, they can, you know, that's, that's not, no. They can put it all on one bill as long as all for Hinkley Brook, but I don't want invoice that has two pieces for Hinkley Brook, one from Middletown and another one from there, because then we're gonna make copies of every one of them and keep it, you know, separated up. So I want, and a couple of them are thinking it's a lot, but I don't think it's gonna be that hard for them to do it. But if they invest that, it's gonna minimize what we're doing here. And we don't, we don't have a lot of contractors. You know, we got, we got a handful of contractors, St. Pierre's Trucking, they're just bringing and delivering. So that, they're not gonna break it out, we have to do that, they're not gonna do that. But, you know, we have P and L Trucking that's working for us, Taylor's Committee, Jamie Gregory.
Russell.
Russell Record.
Did I say Pierre's, yeah?
St. Pierre. Oh, no, Wilson Law. So they're the ones that showed up. They'd be the ones that I'll try to keep, you know, if we hire somebody on as we get down, they're on things down, the last one hired, the first one goes, if I know. First ones that came would be the last ones to leave. It's gonna, we, we fixed a lot, you know, like out of town to the road, a lot of that is all been built. Jamie's doing some rack work on the riverbanks. There's, um, Hinkley Brook, all the fills up through there now, so that's now all the side ditch stuff. And then we'll put gravel on at the end. So now it's gonna slow down and take time, all the tedious work is gonna start. You know, you got spots along the road that only take three, four yards. But, you know, it's now to get the equipment there, doing that spa, taking out the wood or whatever around the coverts and putting it fast. So getting all the material there, we've done that pretty much. Kidder Hill is back open. We had that in a few days so that you can get in and out. We're ready to shake it up and start doing all ditch work on most of these. A lot of ditch washing, we started today, like David did. I don't know how long we're gonna have, you know, some of these contractors are gonna go back and do some of their stuff, trucks. You know, some days I'll have maybe eight or nine, other days I'm gonna have a trucking, so.
You can only do what you can do.
Yeah.
If there's no other discussion, we have the Daisy Turner sign, Bob Donald.
Mr. Fair, I'm a member of the board of directors, and I choose to introduce myself as Saskatchewan.
But you don't have to read.
No, I just.
I will be free if I have one to come on. I'm here actually in behalf of both Wyndham and the Preservation Trust of Ramon, which did the lion share the work up at the Daisy Turner site. By the way, the big celebration on 28th of August, I won't be here. So there's been some interpretive signs prepared, similar in format to the ones at the church and market and in Parren House. And one of them, just read from some of here. Three interpretive signs, one will be in Berchtesgau camp where the new road to Berchtesgau camp joins Turner Hill Road. Well away, well away from travel there, Turner Road. Activity requires a sign be placed in disturbed soil, so the planned placement is on the edge of the fill for Turner Hill Road in front of the cellar hole. I can't say that right now, but. So since it is town right of the, on behalf of the foundation and the Preservation Trust, I'm asking for permission to place one of these interpretive signs up there. And again, the same format as you've seen, also in town. So not exactly a highly traveled part of town, but the end of the Pan Road number one.
Sure, we have our policy about putting stuff in the right of, is this gonna be, is this an issue? I asked him to bring. Okay, let me, let me just ask, Bob, when you go up there, it looked like you guys had placed some flags or something where the driveway takes off in Turner Hill. But up, just the upper part of that, you had some flags on the reeds there, that's where you're gonna put it?
Yes.
Okay, if that is, it is. It is along our right of way, but I think it said back that it's not in the right of way, correct?
It's, yes, it's on the back side of the ditch.
Okay.
What I saw.
It's not. My purpose for being here is just to make sure that both parties apply on anything regarding that stuff.
No, I haven't, but we do have a, we do have a rule about putting stuff in the right of way, so that's why I figured it out.
I, I believe Danny's forgotten, I believe that you're out of the right of way where you're going to put it. Because that right of way is, is narrow, anything going all the way up there, it's not a 50 foot right of way.
Yeah. So you're looking for a motion? Somebody want to make a motion to allow the, the foundation and Daisy Center, both group to put their sign? I guess, I don't know, it's right of way, but whatever it's called. Okay. John, Bill, any further to talk there? If not, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Close? And one, recruits well done, you can put that in at the end minutes as a reference. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, I hope it's a success. Do we have anything else, other than, if you need to talk to anybody, if you want to talk about it, that's all we do, yeah?
Yes, a lot of those coves that were damaged, we're hoping that they'll do mitigation this time, unlike Irene and that. Even though the covert didn't go down the road, except for the one over on Ledro, we're hoping that we can replace more of them, including the one we have an application in to replace right now, actually, the covert, right? It was the first one that happened, we replaced last year. And it really made, I mean, this flood showed why it needs to be replaced. And so, so we're gonna try to do that with them, and we already, I've already mentioned it several times in all our paper work, that we really want to do mitigation this time.
Well, we have to wait for FEMA, right?
Yeah, and, and that would also be the covert at Dick Taro's, that houses that fits every time it rains, really hard. That one needs to replace, the one that Nancy and Cardi Marrows, that's really gotta be back over, and then if we do Ledro where it's currently sits instead of moving it, and I've already mentioned it, if B Trans maybe moves that road, so we avoid the recall together, if we do that, this one there, that it's a huge covert, and then we just, I don't know where the water came from, this one right here to the top. There's all those, those things that we like to do, but don't know that we're gonna be able to do the mitigation, so the, both those coves, the one that we asked, and we have an application for the replace, probably next year, and the one above it in the corner there, both of those hopefully can be replaced, and that one has a hole in it. So we're hoping that we, we can get them to say, yeah, I think it's enough to be replaced, we just, and that's the type of thing you have to follow up on.
Anything else at the highway? Ken, you have anything on COVID treasure or?
Um, yeah, first tax installment payment is due Monday, August 16. Um, the next one coming up, I think the annual noise is gonna be on the warrant as in Cleveland. Um, the next one coming up, um, I think, um, making the annual noise is gonna be on the warrant as in Cleveland, it's not a private office.
Right.
Right, so if you see that when you're signing the warrants, that's who that person is that you have to, and he's still got all the correct paperwork and giving it to Michelle. It's actually dollars for the town of us, so that's all we got, we're gonna deploy it. Um, we did a little bit of, um, calling today to our bank, uh, the bank with the community bank. And I talked to Hope, and that's who I went through when we got that warranty for the town garage, asked her about a warrant of credit. Um, if we should need one, and for how much. So what she needs from the board, um, is five dollar amount, what would we like for a line of credit? And the way it works is we request a line of credit, the money is set aside, it's a very easy process, she said, for, um, the application. Um, as long as you guys set the amount, we designate someone to sign the note. And they'll, she'll send the all, or I sent it out there. And the money will sit there in reserve for us, and we only pay interest on the amount we draw. For the days that we draw, the note's good for up to a year. Um, note payment is due to the, um, maturity of the note. And at that time, hopefully, we have been declared and we will be approved by FEMA. And FEMA will see most of them, that's when we pay off the note. And interest, um. Let's see, so a lot of time to take longer than a year for FEMA to finalize everything. So what they do is have to just extend the note so it can be renewed.
So how much are you looking for?
Um, that I'm leaving up to the experts, Saint John, Liril, Danny, whatever they have, um, asking for an amount.
I think me and Danny and Bill are, are in about the same six hundred thousand, this time.
You mean, like, for Liril, kind of the six hundred thousand?
Yeah.
That may go up as we go on.
Well, that's why we should request, because if you request it, can you up it? Probably not.
I don't think I would, that's one of the questions I can ask Hope. Um, when I get back to her tomorrow, or if you want longer to think about it, but I. It's sixty, okay?
I think they're in Irene.
With what we have.
I think they're in Irene, we started off with a small amount, we had to change it. A bridge over, you know.
It was only, it was only because we needed, we needed some money right away, and we could get a million right away. And then we got a million, nine, uh, no, basically another two million, we never used. So we used, we used the million, and then we had, but we had a big back for it.
But, I mean, just because you have the six hundred doesn't mean you can't go back later on if you need more to, to change it.
Kevin?
Kim, what's the interest?
She could not, like, give that to me, obviously she said it's, it's fairly low right now. Um, but it's above her authority at six hundred thousand, so she wanted to, she had to find out from her, her higher ups what the interest was for the loss. But she said it, it would be low.
Is it, is it a floating interest, or is it interest, I mean, is it change?
Like a bit of fixed, or is it variable, I'm not really sure how she does it right now. But either way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll find out, like, like what the percentage is once we determine what, uh. Um, right now she gets our audits every year anyways, an electronic copy, because we have a title, we'll do that. So I know we send her one updated, they just have to take a look at that. Um, the paperwork is minimal, she said, and it's just, um, giving them inside of the board. And then we're not, you know, and then we'll take approximately two weeks, she said, she could rush it if you need to have it sooner, but approximately two weeks.
But we, we should do something at this meeting, because if we don't.
Then you'll be waiting next week.
Then that's a work of work, so, I mean, we should figure the number before, yeah, Kevin?
Kim, are we involved with other banks?
Not really, we're pretty much have all of our accounts with Community Bank. Um, the only other bank I'm here with is People United, that's more of the trucks account, the, uh, trucking, all the funds, and it's a small amount.
Did I read that Community Bank's already bought? I thought I read something that I got married with somebody? I don't, yeah, I don't remember, I didn't remember.
River Valley just married another man.
Yeah, that's fair, this is.
I had heard.
Suzanne?
Kim, couple things, since we're dealing mainly with local contractors who want to pay as quickly as possible. Um, what would our normal payment schedule be on a monthly basis? And does that give us the two weeks of time to get this line of credit, these funds in the bank to pay our bill?
We, I mean, we've got enough right now that we could run for a while.
Okay.
Um, because like I said, all of our accounts, all of our money markets matters, they are within the one bank. And we do have a general fund, which has all our reserves in that one bank, which has access covered in it now.
Okay, so we're not in a cash crisis, we could pay our bills and plan with a line of credit as needed?
Exactly.
Okay. And then with respect to the interest, does FEMA cover the interest payments? I didn't say.
Bill was the thing, though, I asked the bank, she didn't know, and I was hoping maybe, you know, a hundred million, this is a million dollars on it now.
So I believe, and Danny pointed out earlier, that our ultimate, uh, our ultimate, uh, commitment, uh, will be twelve and a half percent of whatever FEMA declares is the.
Well, that might change, that could change, uh, if, if there's federal involvement, then mitigation could be half of that, I think, seven and a half percent?
Because I thought FEMA's seventy-five percent, and it's twelve and a half, and then we're twelve and a half.
Yeah, but I think it could change, couldn't it, Bill?
That's, we could plan on twelve and a half.
Yeah, right, but it could.
I remember it being kind, though, too.
The government has to change the.
So we don't necessarily owe seventy-five thousand in cash? It can be counted.
Yeah, because it can be in kind, though, like, often for some things like that, that we keep track of.
Okay.
That can go towards it.
Okay, okay, great.
That's the thing.
I didn't know that, that's good.
So does somebody wanna make a motion, Alan, sorry, I just wanted to ask, Kim, can you? Get sort of like pre-approved, like for more, like, could you get pre-approved up to a million and then ask for it in increments?
In increments?
Can you do that?
Yeah.
And, and, and your interest is on the increment that you're taking out, not on the million that you approve for?
But we can ask for more, sure, um, I don't, you know, one of us, they don't mean we're gonna use it. Because we're only charged the interest on what we draw.
Just things going through the process that might be smart to get a little more than you need, and then, then if you don't spend it all, you don't have the interest in that, or.
Especially if it isn't gonna cost us anything.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
John, do you have a thought on how much we should apply for?
I suppose fifty hundred thousand, yeah, what we have assessed of damage as of now is about a million one. But five hundred thousand of that is probably two lost culverts. Which are not gonna probably happen for quite a while. Uh, one's on the led road, and the other one be on Pinkley Brook, so that's why I don't see any reason to ask for more than six hundred thousand at this time. With us having nine hundred thousand on hand and no big expenses, I think we're all set.
Kind of, uh, remember the auditor's suggestion that we need to keep the moment on hand for rainy day, and it's like.
Well, what, what?
Well, rain or moon.
Moon.
But, but I mean, that's, because that's a situation.
Let's, let's pick a number and have a motion to move on with this.
Danny, what do you think?
I think six hundred, I mean, if it doesn't cost anymore, they go to eight hundred and, you know.
Well, that's not.
But, you know, we're gonna use our money before we use their money, just looking at spending interest, but if it's, I mean, last time we got approved for a million, so shouldn't be, should be breached for eight hundred.
But why don't we go pay eight hundred? I mean, it doesn't cost anything, can it take it out?
Yeah, we're not gonna get charged unless we do, so.
So, somebody wanna make a motion? Don't speak alone.
So we got a line of credit for eight hundred thousand and, uh.
At Community Bank.
At Community, what else do you need to motion, say, Kim?
Uh, who is going to be the, um, sire?
Well, who are you, you can't be you.
That doesn't make a sire. Yeah, I mean, it would be the loan papers is what.
The chair, or Bill, either one.
Exactly, yeah, whatever, anybody's to judge us, I mean, Bill, he's in the office, unless you can shake down one of your guys.
Bill's gonna jail, not me.
He's gonna think, don't it?
I don't know, it's.
So we're going, Fred.
So anyway, so the motion is to, to paint a credit line at Community Bank for eight hundred thousand dollars. Will be authority of the town administrator to, um, sign. Do we have a second for that, I think? Do we have, I heard first, Suzanne?
Second.
Do we have any to start? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Foe, okay. All righty, um, do you have anything else, Kim?
No, I think that's it.
Well, but you should, you should, I think we should look into the doctrine, whether we do it or not, but we see, because that might be something that. You might, you don't wanna do.
I know, I know, like, last night I had to come in the office, because we have a dog that was scared from thunder, took off, I called Mike, he wasn't home, she's probably away this dark. So Ronnie and I went down, retrieved the dog, I came in the house, found out what the number was, and go along there, brought it. I'm like, this is why we need to do care of the garden.
Well, the other thing too is, I mean, you don't want, you personally don't wanna go through somebody's house because they didn't pay to, let somebody do it. Today's a driving.
With a, with a authority in a period.
Yeah, and they have experiences.
Uniform and a gun.
Okay, um, the next, the next item is, uh, uh, we, on the, the revised, uh, maneuver procedure. That we added here, uh, to clarify some of the issues that have come out over the course of time. Do we have any, um, discussion about this, or somebody wanna make a motion on the procedure, so we can have discussion? Yes, well. You can't, for a motion, you can't pop. You don't have to approve, you can opt out.
I'll make a motion to talk about it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so here you go, any comments or questions on the procedure?
So I have some concerns about this procedure, and I'm wondering if it would be.
Well, what's your, what could, what quality you have concern to that?
Well, I was just gonna say, the, the procedure puts a lot of boundary around how we can submit information, not only to the select board, but also the public. It's permitted to submit information for a meeting. And it seems, especially the fact that a unanimous vote is required to make an exception. That with this kind of procedure, we are not only limiting ourselves, but also limiting the public we serve. And I think the direction intended here is good, because we've had some discussion, uh, about a practice of the select board being that we submit information in advance of a meeting. But I think this goes into, if I may say so, an onerous amount of detail. And I'm just wondering if it bears some more thought. And I would suggest that, um, we delegate, uh, and take another thought at writing this rule. With the idea of the intent in mind, but also the idea that we don't want to defeat the very purpose we're trying to solve. Which is to make our meetings less open rather than more open. Um, and I think it would be great if, if Bill and maybe the personnel committee, if the select board would consider delegating, um, a new draft of this, of this procedure. To Bill and the personnel committee, I was just thinking, Kathy, maybe you and I could take this on, if we've been working with the V L C T. And try to get some more. A, 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 a rule that goes in the direction we want to go in, but not quite at this level, uh.
Well, maybe you can clarify, I don't, I don't understand where the objection is, how are we making this less public? I, I don't, I don't see it, maybe you could explain.
Okay.
Relative meaning.
Well, I, I know that we have bigger fish to fry in this meeting, namely the storm, the, the road condition, the funding of the project. It's already, it's already almost seven fifteen. Um, rather than dive into it at that level of detail, Joe, I'm just wondering if we could take this offline, give it some more thought. And come back to the select board with a proposal.
Okay, I, I understand your concern, but tell me, I don't, what I don't understand is where the objection is, how does it make it less public? That's what I need to understand.
Okay, I'm happy to share that with you then, in a level of detail that is wonkish, and will take some time, but I think I. Forward to that, okay. So it says, any, first of all, in public participation, there is no such rule in the V L C T model for the rules of procedure. So this is stepping out of the bounds of what has been our model for the rules of procedure. There is no such level of detail in the V L C T model, and I think that's for a reason.
It's a model, just remember.
It is.
It doesn't mean you have to adopt everything, it's a model to use, and obviously, boards can.
Joe, I, obviously, yes, of course, I totally agree with that, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to suggest we give this some more thought beyond its meaning. Any information to be presented must be given to the at-town administrator, no later than noon, the Thursday before regular meeting, and four hours before a special or emergency meeting. In the, um, statutes of govern agendas, um, and I'm trusting the public documents. Um, there is an at least forty-eight hour minimum. So moving that date back to Thursday is, is, I think, putting a boundary that is to dispute. Then it says, exceptions may be made, uh, to the new Thursday deadline. Provided the information is given to the town administrator four hours before a regular meeting. And at that meeting, the select board votes unanimously. That to find that the information will not violate the spirit of the open meeting law, and that finding it in the affirmative, vote unanimously to accept the information for that regular meeting. Normally, when there's a forum, it requires a majority vote. Also, there are some exceptions that require a two-thirds vote. This rule requires a unanimous vote to make an exception. I think that's strict. Also, we know that it is at least arguable. That the phrase "will not violate the spirit of the open meeting law" is disputed. We have, uh, I have put into the record that I saw information from V L C T on this very topic. And the feedback I got that there was, there was no such requirement in the open meeting law for advanced presentation or pre-production of documents before a select board meeting. By either the select board or the public. And I think we have to keep in mind that this rule. And I think we have to keep in mind that this rule is labeled "public participation." We don't want to in any way construe to the people we serve that we are going to limit their participation by requiring a unanimous vote to make an exception if for whatever reason they have a document to bring before us before Thursday, before a Monday select board meeting. Now, these are my views on this topic. But my recommendation is that rather than try to solve this problem tonight, we take this offline with Bill and we work on these concerns until we come back with, to, to the select board with something that I think might be more agreeable, but also keeps in the direction of what Joe described to me as the practice of the select board to submit documents in advance.
Does anybody have any other comments? I don't think, I, I don't see anything that's, how this limits anything, quite frankly. As a matter of fact, if you don't have a rule that should, that to submit information that needs to be on the agenda in a timely manner, then that prohibits the individual resident who might be interested in that particular item. Uh, at least they can see and they can come to the meeting. If it's done right before and they don't see the agenda, it might be something they might be interested in. And, and I would, I could, I, I would have, I would have, I would not have a problem if it said, if it was, take the word unanimously out and, and just let the board decide. The board wants to go three to two or four to one, whatever. So I don't have a problem.
I think there is a distinction between the agenda, which definitely has clear guidelines that generally about what has to be on the agenda in order to give the public full and open access to the meeting and know what topics are going to be discussed at the meeting and the actual pre-production of documents. According to VLCT, there is no requirement, and I'll just read that again to the select board. Documents absolutely can be distributed at meetings, even if they were not part of the board package. The documents become part of the public record for that meeting and should be handled accordingly. Now, there is an argument to be made that this rule is based on a faulty premise, but I'm not going there. I'm saying that there is simply a dispute between the information we have from VLCT about this very topic and what appears in this rule. And I'm suggesting we work it through as a smaller sub-team with Bill and come to the, back to the board with a different recommendation.
Can I ask a question of Bill? Well, how often does the material come to you at the last minute? Is that, it strikes me that's the extreme exception, that you tend to get most of the material in advance, or I feel like I see it in advance.
It, it does, and then I try to get it up to everybody and not just select, but now that we're doing virtual, I send it to all the people who ask to be in attendance virtually. I don't send it to, I don't send it, for instance, to my Rockton resident unless I could, but and then we try to make sure that everybody knows what it is, that that agenda item is going to discuss. So it doesn't happen, I don't, I can't remember happening that we didn't have the document and you know, but it, you know, it, it could, it could happen.
I guess my, my thinking, Melissa, is I sort of support the concept of this because I want to see the material as early as possible. I do not like walking into a meeting and not understanding the issues and then being asked to take action. Um, I, I like the concept of this because it also sets a clear boundary for the public to know what we expected them to get documents to us. But I agree with Suzanne about the, um, unanimous vote. I think that makes it too hard for the exception to come before us and pass.
Well, you can change that. It just says, um, and at that meeting, the select board votes, um, to find, you know, just take it out.
Just take that unanimously, it may be a lot happier.
Then, then it just, if the select board wants to do it, they do it. They don't want to do it, then they don't. And that's up to the board. It could be two, three to two, it could be four to one, or whatever the case might be. And then that's, that's no, you know, piss on it.
I read this, having had it issued a while ago, and unless I misread it, it means I have to be home, uh, someplace, I have to read the agenda on Thursday when it comes out and I have to comment and get information in to you Thursday so that I can speak to it on Monday. That doesn't give me very much time.
Yeah, but it's still, finale is an exception. The exception that we made to the new Thursday deadline, provided the information is given to the town administrator four hours before a regular meeting, so if you can't do it, that's it.
I do think that the, if, if you want public participation and then you start to die by, you're kind of not giving the public very much time to prepare or to digest. If I don't happen to be around Thursday to read it and I don't get to see it till Sunday, it's like, okay, so I can go to a meeting on Monday, but I can't really comment or can't do anything because of, well, I didn't send my data.
Isn't that funny? You should get it to the administrator four hours before.
And then it requires a vote.
Well, yeah, but that's what the meat.
And these are, these are gates that people have to pass through in order to provide information to the select board when it is truly unclear that in any way, shape or form that is required by the open meeting law. The open meeting law and the public records, uh, document record keeping are fundamental to the way the town is governed. And we have a difference of opinion, minimal, a difference of opinion on the application of the open meeting law to this situation. And this is going to be like a bubble under a carpet. If we don't address it now, it's just going to keep popping up. We could invite a member of VLCT. Kathy and I work with a member of VLCT staff on the personnel committee. We could invite someone, we can invite the town attorney, we could invite someone to get, help us get to the bottom of this understanding so that as a select board, we can have a common understanding of what's awful by the open meeting. I think this would be extremely helpful to our work together. And this document goes so far as to say, the information will not violate the spirit of the open meeting law. When requiring a public document at the time of the meeting we have from our trusted resource is not a violation of that. How can we not, in good conscience, explore this further as a select board? Do we agree to a rule like this that is self-imposed? It seems to me it needs to be more, it needs to be more carefully studied, and I'm happy to work with Bill on this. I'm happy to work with VLCT, with Kathy, with any of you who want to join in, but I, I don't, I don't think we should leave this standing the way it is with just the word unanimously changed, although I do appreciate that you would understand that aspect of it.
So I've had the reverse happen during the virtual meeting where it was helpful to have information present for you, especially when you're showing visual images on the computer for everybody to see. I sent some photos and some information in of things I wanted to talk about in the village park ahead of time, so it could be included in the package and presented for people to see. Somebody decided that that was either confrontational or we weren't going to talk about it. So because I sent it in ahead of time, it wasn't put on the agenda.
Oh, it wasn't on the agenda, then?
Well, it wasn't put on the agenda and, and I spent it up early enough so I could have included on the agenda because I sent it Thursday. And so, yeah, I, I then told the board, all you gotta do is contact Bill if you want something on the agenda. And so that's what I did, and it's still there on the agenda, so I, I have no problem.
Well, that could be an oversight. I, I can't imagine, I don't, I don't recall that. I mean, generally, I don't remember. I, I know I personally have not put anything on the agenda unless it was something that required, was it going to be a long meeting and then we postponed it to another meeting, or it was not fully won, or it wasn't given specifics so the public would come and get comments. That's how I felt, that I felt, but I don't remember that, Alan, and if that happened, I apologize for it.
If you do, if you do this, I think you might as well not have public comment on your, on your agenda because you're telling people, you gotta do it Thursday if you want to speak.
No, no, we didn't say that.
Why would we open our, when we have a choice here to look into this further, we don't, we don't have no time pressure to make this decision. Why would we not consider it more deeply and see if we can come up with something that?
I just have a legitimate question. So this, so, um, the board is looking, but the public has to submit within four hours long line a vote. What do you vote? You vote at the meeting?
Yes.
So like, so everybody knows if you say no, you draw something, present it, right?
Well, if, if you want something on agenda, you can go and give it to Bill.
No, I'm talking about documentation. Are you talking about documentation?
Yes, documentation.
Not, not agenda items.
No, no, the agenda item has to be on the agenda. The documentation can be given up to four hours prior to it.
But then, Joe, according to this rule, it has to be voted on as an exception. And, you know, I, I think we have to be clear about what's in this proposed rule, word for word. Why don't we, I mean, I don't, Kathy, it was your motion to talk about it. I don't know what, if we're talking about it. What is the harm in giving this until August sixteenth and taking another look at it? I mean, come on. Do we have to pass this tonight when it's fraught? I mean, it is fraught.
Well, that's your, that's your opinion. I don't see it fraught at all, but I mean, that's your, that's your.
Are all parties involved in this willing to do this?
I don't know.
I haven't heard from the three people that are going to be involved.
Well, I, I think just an idea, John, if you want to be involved, that would be fine.
Does everybody want to do this?
Bill? I'd be willing to be involved, but I'm not, not, not by the, not if, if you want the opinions from all these people, not by the sixteenth. You need to have meetings and discuss the firm. I don't even remember where this particular language went, but this is, this was prepared months ago, like last summer.
It was a two thousand.
The only thing that, the only thing that was changed in this whole thing was, was that the meetings would happen here.
No, this does not, this is a change in our current rules.
Well, yeah, yeah, but it, but it was prepared when, when, when we started virtual meetings. The, the whole thing, this is, was prepared for the virtual meeting.
Right, but it was never enacted by the whole.
About ten, about ten months ago. This is not new.
Well, it wasn't created in the last week.
Hundred seventeen Main Street is where a meeting's going to be.
It was created prior when, it was created whatever, a year ago, but it was never enacted.
Well, it, the, I, I, I totally understand Bill's constraint like Aug- August sixteenth. I mean, he is doing personally a work for the town right now of the road emergency. If he, if it's willing to do this, I'm, I'm willing to do it on his schedule. I think it would be a fair, healthy thing for the select board for, I mean, Bill and I obviously have different points of view on this. We're both willing to work on it. It's a matter of timing. We are under no time pressure to create this rule. I, I think it would be helpful to have one other select board member on the team.
You can't have three people. You can't have three select board members discussing this.
Two select board members?
Two.
Bill and I, according to John's question, Bill and I have just agreed to work on this together. I'm saying it would be helpful to have one additional select motion.
But you talked about the personnel committee, so that, that would be two people.
That would be, that would be Kathy and me.
Yeah, I don't know if Kathy wants to do it. I don't put words to that. I'm just saying, you know, you said the personnel committee, so, and Sue, and Sue Allen wants to be part of that, you know, Kathy, that's between the two of them. But, but we do have a motion on the floor, so we, we, we should vote for it.
The motion, talk about it, talk about it.
No, but as a motion, you, you have to make a motion first to talk about it.
I, but that was a motion.
That's a motion. I'll make a motion now, and Kathy, I, and, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I'll make a motion that we, um, form a sub-team of the select board and Bill to, uh, take another look at this public participation rule and come, and we work at the Bill's availability. So members of the team would be Bill at his availability, and I volunteer to work with Bill on this. I think it would be great to have one additional, um, select board member. That's my motion.
Do we have a second, Bill?
Oh, my gosh. If you remember, work would be quite busy, you know.
If, if, if not, then the motion is, uh, the go problem.
Can I just make it now?
Sure.
I see what's written here on red. It seems this is a bit descriptive to me. I understand you want to take away the unanimous part. I think there could be simpler language put in this to make it clear. That's my thought.
Well, there's no reason why we can't make this simple language right now and get it over with. We want to. This is, this was presented for discussion, certainly. We have every authority here as the board to, to talk about it, and then it's a change of language. I mean, this is what we do. We, we don't have to go back to a committee and make it happen. We can do it right here if, if that's desired of the board.
I feel it should be amended, but I'm, I don't feel we have to go through the whole rules of procedure because it's, it's been on the books for a long time. It's nice to get VLCT's input. We've worked weeks with VLCT over the personnel committee, and I don't want to spend weeks doing this. And I think Bill has put a lot of time and energy in this, and I know one of the additions to this was because of the COVID and we had to go, um, visual inquiry with this. And I can see the point of putting that in here because of COVID. I just like things simple, and I don't think that this, what's here is clear to me. So that's both of my comments.
Kathy, I just want to clarify that my motion applied only to letter B, application, numeral two, public participation. Only to that particular proposed rule am I suggesting we draft, and in your words, a simpler version of this and we come to grips with, and, and I think this would be very good for Bill and me, and maybe just the two of us could do it.
Well, first of all, does anybody have an objection to the first part of it, which says public participation? The public must ask the chair if he or she can, can speak to it, to an issue. Any information could be presented at a meeting, whether by the public or the member of the select board, and given to the town administrator, no le- no. and given to the town administrator no later than noon on Thursday before their regular meeting and four hours before the special meeting or emergency. If everybody agrees with that, then, then that's okay, maybe you move forward. If you don't, how would you like to see a change? I don't see how that, I don't see how that violates anything, quite frankly. You have to have some rules of, of having how things get on an agenda. I mean, you can't, I mean, agenda has got to be posted on Thursday. You can't, you can't put something on Friday, it's already too late, so that's the issue.
It's very interesting because we have no such rule for agendas. The agenda or kind of the rules of procedure are taken directly from the model and they only stay at least 48 hours prior to a regular meeting, at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting. And they do not go into any of this level of detail about the four hours, the, um, the exceptions of that.
We're not talking about the four hours. So we're talking about the first part of this red, about having the agenda for the town administrator.
And for a regular meeting, four hours.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
I'm saying, yes, I do.
Well, what is the problem? How can, if you have an agenda that has to be posted on Thursday, how can you amend the agenda? You can't amend the, the, uh, agenda, amend it as a forty minute. And if you don't put it on the agenda, then the public receives the agenda and sets the agenda. You can't add something because then they don't know whether or not it's going to be on the meeting. So I don't understand the reason of why you have an objection to that.
I, I, I'm going to share that with you now and this is precisely the reason why I think we need to take this off the line.
Probably it has to be offline, I guess we, we're the people.
I just kind of refer you to agendas, items two in the rules of procedure. At least the agendas have to be in at least 48 hours prior to a regular meeting. There is no mention in our rules of procedure about having the agendas in by Thursday. It's just simply not fair, Joe.
Well, just because the LC says it, it's not illegal.
These are the hours, these are not the LCT, these are our rules of procedure. Joe, it just makes a lot of sense, please, it just makes a lot of sense. I'm sorry, Wendy's wanting to read.
I just wonder, if 48 hours is 48 business hours, is that what that would be about? And that's why it was Thursday ever, maybe?
No, and, and, well, in state law, almost anything you have, just like the five days to get your medicine, Saturday and Sunday, count this.
I think too.
Yeah, and so I think that this, this.
You understand.
Well, obviously, this is country.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So what, are you going to use the 48 hour one or are you going to use the? We have always been on the Thursday, correct?
With the reason you want plenty of time to, uh, the more time you, you give to post your agenda, the more likely the public is going to find out what's on the agenda. That's the way, reason to do it. And that's why we're doing it. Seriously, if you're going to do it 48 hours, I don't think we're going to post it.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, but Bill, you just calculated the point.
Well, then you should, then, then either you get rid of the 48 hours and you adopt a new one.
Or you would know what I'm saying is, is the balance that was hard to be struck when it was being read in spite, and I'm making notes on everything, I'm writing about what you're seeing and I understand the difficulty with it. But the whole idea, don't look at it and, I mean, I, it, it wasn't discussed. I don't remember it being discussed when whoever it was, I don't even remember who worked with me as preparing this. Uh, it wasn't discussed that we're limiting the people brief to bring evidence to the meeting. What we don't want is people to bring stuff to the meeting at the last minute that the public has no idea that it's going to be brought up. And that's why you wanted her to visit. So you want to some way say, now, this is documented, doc, we're talking about documents. You don't want them, you don't want the people to be surprised by a document that is presented at the meeting. But I also understand, on the other hand, you can find out about the meeting late and that's why it comes in and why the vote. Now, the vote can be less than unanimous. The whole idea is that unless it is something is egregious that this person is bringing in and is it egregious to violate of, and I may use the word that you don't like, the spirit of the opening meeting law, even if it's not in the open me, and that is to let the public know what's going to go on at this meeting. Unless it's something egregious, it's going to be approved coming into the meeting. I mean, I, it, it isn't that whether or not you agree with, with the statements that are in that document. It's whether or not that document should have been presented earlier because everybody knew about it and so on. But, but in the example that Alan used, if it's just a resident, I don't mean to say that just a resident. If it's a resident who isn't aware of what's going on until the last minute, they complete, they can say, I just found out about this and here's a relevant document. I can't see reasonable people telling them that you can't present it. Yeah, so that's all, that's, and what this was, what was meant to do is, is not to have somebody have a, a relevant document and withhold it, hoping that fewer people would show up at the meeting that, that might really be opposed to what they're going to present. That's, that's all, that, that was the idea of it. But I understand that there's some issues with this and if you need to take time to go through it, then, then, then fine.
I agree, Bill.
Or, or, or just take it out and see if we have an issue with it.
Yeah, Bill, I have, I want to restate that I understand the intention of this rule and that like Sue said, the concept of it is something that I think we should move in the direction of. And besides, Joe has already said that it's been a longstanding practice of the select board and it's fine with me to figure out a way to codify that in the rules. Uh, that's why I'm willing to work on it. And it sounds like Bill is willing to work on it. And maybe if the select board is willing to then just let the two of us work on it. Uh, we can come back to you with something that we see is, meets the needs of the concept, the simplification, the, uh, the, um, consistency with what we say about the agenda. And I think that Bill and I would just have to have a spirited discussion about the opening meeting law.
Alan, so we heard that this was prepared quite a while ago and it was prepared because of COVID. And I just have a little struggle with why is it important to adopt it now? When we're now back to having open, uh, meeting, people attending? And so if this was written because of COVID and doing things virtually, what's the urgency of approving it tonight? We're not being business, by the way.
Hey, you're the group, you're the business, like pre-COVID. The only reason it came tonight is because Kathy said, it says in the procedure that we're meeting at the garage. And I said, well, that's one thing we really do have to change right away. So anyway, well, yeah.
And so that is my. I have a problem if, if, if you're willing to work with Suzanne over the language, I have no problem with it. But I do have a problem for next, let's be realistic, next, next meeting.
When it, when it could transition.
It's not, it's, there's a flood and whatever is happening.
Why, why we do for the first meeting in September, I, no one is more supportive in understanding of what Bill and others are doing for the storm and the preparation of that. And, uh, but I will also take it as a serious action item and that we have to come back to the select board in some reasonable period of time.
Okay, so, yes, Bill.
Can I suggest that you change the rules of procedure tonight to say, to say, not paragraph two, just take all that out, the rules and the figure you have right now.
Yeah.
To say you're meeting at 1:17.
Okay.
That sounds good.
And let me see, and, uh,
That's the only one you wouldn't change it.
And, yeah, and you can leave the, leave or take out the, including virtual meetings.
Right, so if we could do that, then at least we, we have, and we can.
We have rules procedure.
Then you can have a rules procedure and then you can deal with number two. And number two can be enacted, leave it as it was before. So somebody make a motion to let me do that.
No.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Is that all a favor to just make those small changes and then?
Just, just that one small change.
Huh?
Just the one small change.
Yeah, and then, um, then Sue and Bill will, will work on this thing, um, as time permits. Hopefully getting to us in September.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, your next committee reports. The cemetery committee met, John and I and Dave Rogers took a ride up to the five acres that the Fisher family wants to donate to the town. Uh, it's a perfect site. Uh, the problem is, is there are two problems. Number one is that the, the whole deed into the town is not beneficial. So just because somebody has a requirement or she wants to deal with it, which is Cheryl. Well, say, or no. Um, this, all of this land is in, in estate. So the, we're going, Bill is going to request from Cheryl uh, that we have an affidavit that everybody in the Fisher family is agreeing with this. Because there's no sense for us to continue to do any work or surveys or anything if there's not an agreement within the family. So that's where that stands. The other, the other issue is, is that the road going up to it is in absolutely horrific shape. And it's been neglected by the landowners who use that road on a constant basis. So the town would then have to bring that road up to specifications, which would be pretty cheap, uh, pretty expensive. However, there is the possibility that there might be gravel on it by the per site. And if there is gravel, then that would certainly lower the cost to rebuild that road. But it's a, it's a perfect place for a cemetery. But I think before we can even go any further, we need to get, uh, indication from the Fisher estate that it's, it's, it's okay. And then John pointed out that, that the next step would be then is to contact the landowners to see if there's any attraction from the landowners to put a cemetery next to their property. So I, I think it's a, it's a very viable, viable site. I think it's good. I don't know whether it actually happened, but I think it's in the hands of the Fisher family now to come and give us a, a, a letter of intent. So that's where that stands. Does anybody else have anything to add?
Going to make a recommendation, check through the soil conservation service, they should have.
We will. I've really talked to Bill about that, but there's no sense going any further until you get the letter of intent. So why waste that time? Highway?
Joe, we just, uh, John and I are going to have to take a look at this. We just received some D trends, copies of the letters that are going to go out to the adjacent homeowners uh, to the Walker Bridge project. Uh, I think this is going to have to do with the roadway. I haven't read this yet, so I'm going to have to, John and I are going to have to read this and then.
Okay, well, let us know so we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
They already have it on the landowner.
They already have it, yeah.
Yeah, they already have it on the landowner's.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the, I think.
So there's nothing else to do there?
I'm not sure, but I think there's copies for the select board members and if they are, I'm just going to put them in your, I still.
The first meeting is eight, eight twelve.
Eight twelve?
What, what is eight twelve? What is eight twelve?
Eight, eight twelve.
During the morning, it's not, it's in the DCA. I know, we need, no, 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 these are for property owners who've scheduled the meetings. I believe what's in here, copies of the letters and select board members are, are invited to participate. But as I say, I'm going to have to just distribute it via the mail with Bill's help.
Okay, so if, if these letters have already gone out, then there's no need to put it on the agenda.
No.
Anything else in the highway committee? The parks committee met, you want to give a synopsis?
And we met with Alan and Marco, Matt and Mike, who've been doing a lot of the work, coordinating the work up there. And they are going to come back at the next meeting, I believe, the 16th, with a proposal for applying for grant with co-signed by adjacent landowners for some amount, we're not quite sure yet. They'll make a recommendation and they will specify what the money will be used for. So we'll have a good idea of what kinds of expenses. I would get eighty percent, ninety percent. This board has already approved the kinds of things that they're going to use the money for. So I don't think there'll be any surprises for anybody, but they need our approval.
They, they did, they did promise that they would have a meeting made in, uh, by Thursday so it can go on the agenda so people can distribute it to the board.
Is this a free application?
It's a letter of, a letter of interest, yeah, letter of intent that we plan to apply.
Anything else? Personnel committee, any reports?
Um, we met with Jill Meara last week, last Wednesday, Sue and I, um, and going over the personnel, um, policy. And we've got some edits that we'd like to propose. We're completely thinking, it should be in the next couple of weeks to present our, um, proposals to the board.
Okay. Um, anything else on the personnel? Uh, building's committee?
Um, the, um, contract with the key pump that will be up here and in our post office was awarded to, at your, at your meeting to Coleman, who has done the rest of the building. Uh, I, when I, I told all the, uh, the three who had given us estimates that two of them lost and the other one won. And I told, and the one that has already put in the order for the equipment and it is time to start and put the equipment in. It will be based on when that is available. Each guy could use the data at the end. We're hoping to have it done in time for the election at the end of the month. So that if that is warm weather, not right now, if that is warm weather, then it'll be nicer up here. And, um, and, and, and they'll, they'll also install it in the, in the post office. That's Coleman that got the bid. He isn't doing electricity, the electricity is a separate estimate that we got and that is from Gus Plumber. He will be doing the electricity, uh, doing the electrical hookup. And he will run the post offices off their box and us off our post office. Then he'll be paying for their air conditioning, just like they do now. And, and to some extent their heat. And, and so it might reduce the costs to us of having a post office there because we might give a cutback on the fuel used to heat the building. Uh, with regard to, uh, the elevator, um, I have made initial contact by type of, the only architect that I found that, um, Bill, Bill Badger, uh, suggested, I asked him again if he would please do it one last time, he's still, he's retired, he's still licensed. And he will, he couldn't, but the only person he knew of that had the capacity, especially since it's a historical building and has had a relationship with the historical people in, in doing historic facilities would be Stevenson Associates. So I contacted Bob Stevens and he and the architect of that firm have talked to me. They are going to work, work up a proposal for the cost of doing the initial work. Uh, and then what you'll give them, because you have to check with, with the, it's hard to deal with this archesociety unless you have a guy who's going to do, actually deal with it. So the architecture, they should deal with that. And I tried and it just didn't work. So anyway, um, he, he will deal with them. And if, if we accept his proposal, then we will pay him for the initial work and then we would then do in the contract if that's who we're going to use. And I, and I tried other firms that engineering firms best. I thought would do it and that hasn't worked out. And, and the person who was going to do it voluntarily thought more about it. And he said, because this is a, is a public building.
And he said, because this is a, is a public building, even though he would be working with Bill Badger to have a license, it is an opening, if anything goes wrong, for people that come after the town and him, but mainly after the town. He said, you need the full, have the thing, just great, fully licensed person in Vermont do it. So that's why, that, that, that's why he went back to an article regular, not a regular, an architect, that is, fully licensed and prepared to do it here. But he isn't going to do anything until we agree to apprise the initial proposal. And with regard to that, it appears things Suzanne sent us an article that we are getting the county money. So we should be receiving one half of one hundred and ninety-seven instead of one half of, of seven.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that would give us, that might be enough. That should be enough for the elevator, uh, especially since we have other funds available, uh, including the women's coverage and, yeah. So we should be able to do that. And if that's the case, it'd be really nice if we could do it sometime in the spring. And you'll live there. ADA compliance here is equated on every, um, agenda that we put out is based on the fact that, uh, we have this. And, and if they need more accommodation, they're to call. The only way we can accommodate them is meet downstairs, and that's what we're going to do. So.
One, you, you mentioned architect, repeated it. But it seems like when you start building an elevator, you really ought to be talking engineer.
Well, Stevens is an engineering firm that does architecture, that has an architect who would be on that. I should have said that more.
Good, good. Well, my son is a contractor, and he gets stuff that's done by architect. All the time he says, it looks pretty, but it isn't going to work. You know, engineering wise, it's not going to work.
Actually, it went the other way. I, 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 when he said Stevens, and I said, well, does he have an architect in the firm? And he does, so it's difficult. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Um, wait for water. Um, Sue, Sue, before you, you, you're going to meet with.
I'm meeting with Meg and Chris, who've been doing the public education part tomorrow. I did invite Matt, it's just crazy, he couldn't make it and didn't object to not at the meeting.
And I instructed Bill to, that Sue and I, Sue and I talked that we'd like to set up a meeting, whether virtual or in person, with time bond and with the other, uh, people, just to move on, see what's going. But because of the flood, we'll just put that off to, um, there's no rush on this thing because we're, we're way, way far away. I mean, we check on the funds and, and contracts. But we need to start working on the time bond, do a contract once the funds are due. So that's in the works or it's in our minds, but the flood is, or the storms, it's kind of.
Joe, can I enter into conversation with Matt?
I haven't talked to Matt. We, we played kind of, I was going to follow him, and he wasn't there. And he called me back. And so I had, I, my grandkids and I've had family here all week left. So it's been hectic for me. So, uh, I'll, I'll get to that soon, then, then.
Right.
Matt and I just talked on the cell phone. And we, we all go get together, and he is going to, he wants to be involved with the engineering part of it, which is great. So that's great.
Um, Joe, once before I asked about, um, telling the public what, when, there's like sort of a timeline, or how do you get from here to there? Um, when does the public get to participate? And at that time, your answer was, was not up to the select board, it's up to the wastewater committee.
No.
But now that it's back to the wastewater or back to the select board, I would, uh, renew my request to know what the timeline procedures, you know, when does the select, when do the public get to participate and raise concerns and issues? Um, so.
But we don't know that.
You're not asking answers on no, we don't, you don't like to know it.
Well, we don't know that yet. First of all, we don't even know if we're going to get the money. Okay, so that's number one. And, and so once we have authority of the money, and that's the reason why Sue and I will start the meeting and start to prepare the procedure of how we're going to go forward with, not only with the engineering study, but how are we going to educate the public and have a series of meetings so that people are being informed of how this project is going to work, where is it going to cost, where is it going to happen, and like all those kinds of things. And if we change, Sue and I have visions that we will have multiple meetings with, with the individuals, because it has to be sold to the public, whether they accept it or not. But you have to try to sell. It's a salesless job, and they need to know everything before they say nay and nay. So Alan, that, that will happen. You can, you can rest assured of that. Don't worry about it. That's important.
Not worried. No, no. So, Sue, anyway.
Um, Sue, do you have anything else? Sue, I want to make that one. Uh, Bill comment, really, vote a comment?
August twelfth is the plot, east of the ice, can be here. Here are tax appeals. August thirty-third, from ten to seven P M, they're really voting upstairs here for this school vote.
What day is that, October?
August thirty-third is the vote. It's a typical. So ballots will be needed to count, um, at the end. It's seven P M, we'll be closed more than. We're going, um, I'm going to be posting the warning. And I have, um, absentee ballots available. I have it put out there. Uh, it's to accept or withdraw the Westminister's school from the district along with their debt. So it's a one article, yes or no.
But we're going to, we're going to, everybody, I think, are going to need the whole crew, the town, the balance, you know?
Yeah, because they don't know who can and who can't make it. So, I mean, it's a yes, no, it's going to be very quick. But right now, you know, if, if we've got a commitment, you know, I know, it's not, it's probably not going to take all twelve of us, but I still can't say how many I need and what year I want to get, so.
Okay.
Kim, you said that those to accept or withdraw and their debt?
Like, they're taking.
But they withdraw their debt, not to accept their debt.
No, they're taking their debt and they're building with that.
Correct.
And that's the first one.
Like a election.
Yeah. As, as they often have to do this vote. And Westminister is doing a vote on this thing today, but there is, um, who accept it? And also to, um, you know, we're going to have board members, um, configuring all.
For my faculty tool? Uh, faculty tool will be probably more on the March election. I think right now, Westminister wants to have an election to have, um, their members actually working, not formally, but together that are elected for the process at, going forward to their March meeting. It isn't going to happen until, until, for me, for you.
So there's no voting for the school board members to grant?
No, not this time around. No, but it won't, that will happen in March, as far as I know, according to Jack.
Um, other business? Okay, if there's no other business, um, we have, the next item is executive session. Um, we need to have a vote to go into executive session?
I'm going to make a vote. I move to adjourn to executive session with select board members on late for Title I, USA Section three thirteen, A three.
Go into session, Matt?
I didn't hear.
Go ahead, say your answer, Sue.
I move to adjourn to executive session. Select board members on late for Title I, USA Section three thirteen, A three. Come on, huh?
Is there a second to this? If there was no second, there was no.
I, I just want to, um, that time, that's certainly, that's certainly a part of the process. I, um, wanted to adjourn into executive session because the, uh, it's really the only statutory available way for the select board to discuss sensitive matters. And, uh, the other option is to discuss them publicly.
Bill, do you have anything you want to say? Okay, we have, um, we need to have a adjournment motion?
Please adjourn.
Second, third. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?